I'd like to call to order this regular meeting of city council for Monday, May twenty seventh. And I will ask if there's any amendments or changes to the tonight's agenda.
I don't think so.
Seeing none, I'll look for a mover and a second. Thank you, Council Nordic. Thank you, Council Herberger. All in favor? The agenda has been adopted. Does anyone wish to declare a conflict of interest with anything this evening? Seeing none, we'll move forward to public acknowledgements, and I have two this evening. The first is uh the grand reopening today of hearing life in Humboldt, and it was very nice to be out there and see their commitment and concern for making sure that healthcare services were provided in Humboldt to the area and citizens to make sure that they were adequately looked after without having to drive the hundred and fifteen kilometers to Saskatoon. That was one of their first things they brought up with me. So it's nice to see them committed and have a new service in Humboldt that will help us take care of many of our citizens. The other one is a more somber note um the passing of one of our former mayors, Mayor Mark Seidel, who spent a term in here as mayor and term on council. He was a business leader and great commitment to the city and its committees in whole. And we are fortunate enough to see his legacy carried on through his daughter, who sits on council with us now and may someday be mayor. So we'd like to pay our tribute to him as well at this moment. Go ahead, Council Herberger.
Thank you, Mayor, and yeah, I also want to congratulate Northeast Pregnancy Options at the Kishaf Center. They opened last week and they have a beautiful little office. They are open for any donations for children and that anything like diapers, clothing, actually even for the moms. Um, they do operate appointment only Mondays and Wednesdays, so you do have to phone ahead. But they are doing a fundraiser and I'm challenging all point. So I challenge you guys tonight. But some point here, I'll pass it around. Thank you.
Thank you, Council Herberger. Anyone else have any public acknowledgements they wish to? Yes, go ahead, Council.
Yeah, I just have a prepared statement here to read on behalf of the Museum and Gallery Board. Uh Sask Arts provides funding and support to the arts for the benefit of all people in Saskatchewan. They also give recognition to artists and organizations throughout Saskatchewan who have made a difference in their communities, celebrating them for their contribution to the arts in our province. For twenty twenty four, the recognition awards included fifteen emerging professional artists, thirty eight established artists and arts leaders, four aspiring youth artists, and thirteen organizations, festivals, collections for a total of seventy awards. The Humboldt District Museum and Gallery Board is pleased to announce that Jennifer Fitzpatrick, curator of the Humboldt District Museum and Gallery and Director of Cultural Service for the City of Humboldt, has been chosen as one of the recipients of this prestigious award. The awards are being presented today at Dark Hall in Regina, so that's where Jennifer is today. So congratulations to Jennifer and um really appreciate all these awards and things that um she's being bestowed with because it's really bringing a lot of attention to our community in the arts world. And so I just want to congratulate them for for that work.
Absolutely. Thank you, Councilor, and definitely we have been fortunate to have Jennifer and her committee behind us to help us stay in the forefront of the arts and cultural services. Anyone else have any public acknowledgements they wish for this evening? Seeing no further, we will move on to minutes. The first are the minutes of the regular meeting of council held April twenty second, twenty twenty four. And I will look for a mover and a second or to adopt those minutes. Council Courtney, thank you, and Council Clitch, all in favor? Those meaning minutes are adopted. We have no delegations this evening. So we will move forward to committee reports, and I will vacate the chair to the deputy mayor.
Okay, we have committee reports. We have minutes of the executive committee meeting held May thirteenth, twenty twenty four. Uh can I get a mover and a second or for those minutes, please? I've counted Nordic and Council Jorgensen, all in favor? Thank you very much. That is passed and also uh Humboldt District Museum and Gallery Board meeting held May ninth, twenty twenty four. Any questions or concerns with that one at all? Okay, seeing none, can I get a mover and a second or for that, please? Council Herberger, Council Courtney, all in favor? And that is passed. We're going to move on to bylaws, and we have a recommendation from the city assessor for a mobile home fee bylaw. Go ahead, Jase. Oh, sorry.
Okay.
That'll be is that
Please I catch up to where we're
That would be Joe.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So what we're doing is we're introducing a bylaw uh for your consideration this evening. It's in essence, it's just a um replacement of a previous bylaw. So we're going to rescind uh uh the recommendation is that this report be received and filed as information in support of the recommendation to adopt Mobile Home Fee Bylaw five of twenty twenty four, repeal by law number nineteen of nineteen ninety seven, and rescind policy four one two zero. And really, what it is, it's just cleaning up uh some of the paperwork that uh so that the it complies with basically our process. Uh the old processes we're talking about. Anybody who brings a trailer to the city has to come and apply at the city for a license that issued in their name. That's not what we do. Uh we have a monthly licensing program with the owner of the mobile home park. And so it's basically goes on moving permits that he's issued uh uh following a moving permit. He's issued uh an invoice for the monthly licensing. Uh so really, it's just cleaning up some of the paperwork. Uh process is largely the same, or the intent is entirely the same. I can take any questions you may have about this.
Yeah, and just to clarify, th- this is not a new fee or a change to the fees. It's a cleaning up of our processes.
Uh you're absolutely correct, uh Councilor Jorgensen. It's uh the it has always been that the fees were based on the assessment times the effective tax rate of of the mobile homes to convert it to a monthly licensing fee, and that's the same intent here. We haven't changed uh the formula at all.
Okay. So moving forward. Go ahead with the first reading. Ye- yes. Okay, can I get a mover and a second or for the first reading of bylaw? Number zero five, two zero two four, by law to provide for the collection of fees for mobile homes. Can I get Council Herberger? Thank you. And a second or Council Nordic, all in favor? Thank you very much. And moving on to the second, can I get a second mover? Can I get a mover and a second or for the second reading? Counselor Minch and Mayor Be Hill, correct? Yes, uh all in favor? Oh, sorry, before we start that, any discussion or questions about that? Seeing none, all in favor? Thank you. And now we're going to get a mover and a second or to allow for three readings. This meeting, Council Jorgensen, Council Courtney, all in favor? Thank you. That is unanimous, and I'm going to ask for mover and a second or for a third and final reading for bylaw zero, zero five, two zero two four. Mayor Be Hill, Council Nordic, thank you, all in favor? That has passed.
Great, thank you, Deputy Mayor. We will move forward to new business. The first item on new business for this evening is a proclamation by the city for Pride Week. And I'll read that proclamation right now. The City of Humboldt is a diverse, accepting, and safe community for residents and visitors alike. And whereas pride is a global movement that stands for equality and celebration of diversity for lesbian, gay, bisexual, trans, intersex, queer, questioning, two spirited, and their allies. And whereas pride is a way of honor and respect all people regardless of gender identity or sexual orientation, to recognize our differences and uniqueness and to promote and build community through education and understanding. Now therefore, this council for the City of Humboldt is hereby proclaim the week of June tenth to June sixteenth as Humboldt Pride Week in the City of Humboldt. In witness whereof, I have herein to set my hand and cause a seal of Humboldt to be affixed as twenty seventh day of May twenty twenty four. If there is any discussion, we will have it now, or I will look for a mover in a second or to adopt this proclamation to make it. Thank you, Council Clitch. Council Courtney, thank you, all in favor? That is carried. The next proclamation for Parks and Recreation Month. And I will read that proclamation now. Whereas in Saskatchewan, we are fortunate to have a variety of recreation and park systems providing countless recreational opportunities for residents. And whereas recreation enhances quality of life, promotes active living, and contributes to a healthy lifestyle. And whereas recreation contributes to the social well-being of our community by instilling a sense of community pride, strengthens volunteerism and community development, and promotes inclusion. And whereas the benefits provided by recreation and parks programs and services reduce healthcare and social service cost, serve to boost the economy, economic renewal and sustainability, enhance property values, attract new business, and increase tourism. And whereas our parks, open spaces, and trails ensure ecological sustainability, provide spaces to enjoy nature, help maintain clean air and water, and preserve plant and animal wildlife. And whereas in Saskatchewan, we value and benefit from ancestral and contemporary treaty relationships that allow us to enjoy recreational pursuits on the land we share, which are deeply rooted in traditional and cultural significance. And whereas the City of Humboldt recognizes the important role that municipality has in contributing the support and delivery of recreation and park services. Now therefore, I, Michael Be Hill, Mayor of the City of Humboldt, do hereby proclaim the month of June twenty twenty four as Recreation and Parks Month in the City of Humboldt. And I'll ask if there's any discussion for that, or I will look for a mover in a second or to adopt proclamation. Thank you, Council Nordic. Thank you, Council Herberger. All in favor? That is carried as well. Okay. Moving forward, the next item up is a recommendation by the interim city clerk for council appointment to boards, committees, and city positions. Jase?
Uh thank you. I am recommending that Shelby Kiefer be appointed to the Humboldt this downtown Business Improvement District Board on a two-year term expiring January thirty first, twenty twenty six. And that Kelsey Rubrina of Munacode be added to the list of appointed building inspectors for the City of Humboldt pursuant to provincial requirements. Uh as you'll recall, back in January, council had approved the appointments of various city positions as well as the uh boards for the various uh uh boards throughout, I guess, the the city. Uh the city was advised that the bid had received an application from Shelby Kiefer and that she qualifies for a position that was vacant without that board. Uh and Munacode has recently hired Kelsey Rubrina. Uh they conduct the level three building inspections for the city, and according to provincial regulations, uh we have to appoint all building inspectors that will be working within the city. Uh upon these approvals, there are still two vacancies that uh exist on the Reed Thompson uh Public Library Board. Uh the city has previously put out a call on its website looking for additional board members. Um i- if the recommendation is adopted, uh the we will be by city council, we will be informing the um the members that they are uh now appointed to the board on their term. Um and uh if there are any questions, I can take those.
Thank you, Jase. Questions for the acting city clerk? Seeing none, I'm going to look for a mover in a second or to adopt these recommendations. Thank you, Council Courtney. Thank you, Council Jorgensen, all in favor? That is adopted. Our next recommendation this evening is by the city controller regarding increasing the city's established debt debt limit. Jase?
Thank you. I'm recommending that the City of Humboldt apply to the Saskatchewan Municipal Board to increase the city's debt limit by thirteen million up to twenty eight million so that the city can facilitate the borrowing necessary for the wastewater treatment facility as well as maintaining borrowing capacity for other municipal needs that will likely occur in the near future. Uh debt limits within Saskatchewan are uh established by the Saskatchewan Municipal Board. Uh and to increase, decrease, or to exceed, uh you have to apply. Uh and a part of applying is getting a council resolution. Currently, the city has approximately two and a half million outstanding uh in long-term debt. Uh there are a couple factors that also uh factor into uh our ability to borrow. Those are the guarantees of any loans, which uh there is a twenty eighteen loan for the Humboldt District Fire Protection Association with a balance of about thirty two thousand remaining. And there is a guarantee of the Humboldt Golf Club loan with a balance of about two hundred and thirty thousand outstanding at their twenty twenty three year end. Uh meaning that the city's available debt limit as of uh year end of twenty twenty three was approximately twelve point two million dollars. Uh there there are some upcoming loan um or we're anticipating an upcoming loan for the wastewater treatment facility as well as the upgrades to lifts one and four. Uh the total project's estimated to be about forty million dollars. Uh ISIP is going to be covering approximately twenty five million of that. Um the city uh will be looking to fund approximately fifteen. Uh we have spent approximately one point seven to date, leaving thirteen point three to complete the project. Uh however, there is further growth anticipated in Humboldt, uh which could require uh future loans. Um some of those expenditures expenditures could be offset by the off-site levies. Um but those are, we need the growth to come before those are able to be collected. So in the interim, if uh our infrastructure is needing to be expanded, uh there there could be borrowing uh that could come to council's request in the future, which is why we are seeking to increase it by that thirteen million dollar uh for the uh wastewater treatment loan. Um the there, that's basically the gist of it. Um if there's any questions, I I can take those as well.
Thank you, Jase. Um any questions for the director? I think it's pretty straightforward, and I know we've talked previously about borrowing money for the wastewater facility and trying to expand it while we could, and the prices are lower. Unfortunately, the inflationary costs have pushed us above that limit much as it has with most other items that we are encountering. So it's a pretty straightforward request. My only question I had, Jase, was just we're allowed to borrow up to two times. We're asking for approval to go above that two times limit, or that's the two times is something separate?
Uh so there's some conflicting information on that uh between the act and and the Sask Municipal Board guideline. Um but even to get up to two times, we we would have to apply. Our established debt limit right now is fifteen million. Um to even to go to fifteen five, we would have to apply to the Sask Municipal Board to even increase up to that. Okay, that was just kind of a rough guideline um for information that I could find that that seems where we could potentially be.
Fair enough. Thank you. Okay, and no other questions for the director? I will then look for a mover in a second or to move this forward. Council Herberger, thank you. Council Nordic, thank you. All in favor? That is approved and adopted. Our next recommendation this evening is again by the city controller for the twenty twenty three year-end reserve update. Jase?
Thanks. Uh I'm recommending that the twenty twenty three year-end reserve transfers be approved as presented, including an allocation of nearly five hundred thousand to the contingency reserve. Uh as a part of the year-end process, we balance the appropriated reserves to our cash on hand balance. Uh the the individual reserve transactions aren't subjected to the audit. However, the completion of the Schedule Eight, which com- comprises our audited financial statements is required. Um the twenty twenty three annual budget, we had approximately three point nine in contribution reserves with about well, nearly the identical amount in draws. Uh there was a net draw anticipated of approximately forty five thousand. Uh at this point at year end, uh the contribution to reserves is nearly five point two million with the draw being just over seven million for a net draw of one point eight million. Uh the variance, uh it does seem to be quite large at first, but uh you got to keep in mind that the budget doesn't allocate for any outstanding projects uh from prior years. Uh the tables that are included within this report uh break down every transaction that was a contribution and what was a draw and what we had budgeted. Um it there's there's no real variances. There's is some uh difference of amounts. So if you have any questions on those, I can definitely uh try to provide some clarification. Uh I'm not going to go through and explain every transaction. I'm hoping you all had a an opportunity to review them all. Um the the only notable one is that four ninety nine, two twenty five, uh after all the the remaining uh reserve contributions were calculated as per approved in the budget. That amount was remaining, and we're just recommending that that go into the contingency reserve rather than dedicating it to a specific reserve, giving it a a specific purpose.
Thank you, Jason. I think all of us around the table are quite familiar with the fact that we've had to adjust some of those multi-year projects. So the differential, as you said, for ongoing projects is definitely there and changing according to our inflationary costs going through the roof. Any other questions or comments for the city controller? Seeing none, then I will look for a mover in a second or to move this forward and approve it. Thank you, Council Clitch. Thank you, Council Courtney. All in favor? That is adopted. Our next recommendation is by the city controller regarding a payment authorization policy update.
Uh I'm recommending that the payment admit or payment authorization policy ten ninety five is attached be adopted as amended. Uh back in twenty twenty two, council adopted the new payment authorization policy just to ensure that uh controls were in place to limit any potential risk of fraud uh while allowing administration to maintain some efficient processes. Uh and that was for all payment methods, whether it be check, uh E F T, uh and it required us to then have two signing authorities approve all those payments that were made. Uh with the absence of the Director of Corporate Services, we've been operating with only two approved signing authorities on staff. And recently, we've been able to fill the position of finance manager. However, as according to policy payment or as according to policy ten ninety five, the payment authorization policy, uh the city controller position uh which I have taken on is not an approved signing authority. So the amendment to this policy just adds the city controllers and approved signing authority. And further, it allows us to authorize the the finance manager who's filled that position to become uh a signing authority with R B C. Uh and it allows us an additional signing authority just to uh in the absence of of Joe or myself to allow payments to still go through and not delaying any of our our payment batches on a weekly basis. If there's any questions, I can take them.
Thank you, Jase. I am, this is more of an administrative purposes, and I can provide a little bit of insight into it. I know that there was one week when we actually scrambled to find a secondary signing authority because of of absences and illnesses that uh we were scrambling as fast as we could to try and get through a second person and created a bit of a headache for us at the end of the week. So this is more to help us clean that up and allow for some excess people to be available should they be needed. Any questions for Jase before I call the question? Seeing none, I'll look for a mover in a second or to adopt this. Thank you, Council Jorgensen. Thank you, Council Minch. All in favor? This is adopted. Thank you, Jase. We'll let you off the hook for now. We're moving forward to the next recommendation, which is the Director of Leisure Services for the twenty twenty four Summer Sizzler Parade Route Request. Mike?
Thank you. Uh the recommendation before you is that the requested road closure of Fifth Avenue from Seventeenth Street to Peck Road uh from eight thirty P M to eleven P M on June twenty ninth, the Summer Sizzler fireworks be approved. Uh since twenty twenty, the fireworks uh display show has been at Centennial Park. This has proved to be a great location uh in close proximity to significant parking spaces uh and views. So um we're looking at doing uh this once again this year. Um the event this year uh will move to June twenty ninth instead of on candidate July first, and that will coincide with our Summer Sizzler's uh lineup of events uh with the Summer Sizzler Midway running uh that night until eleven P M as well. So uh if there's any questions, I'm happy to answer.
I do have a question, Mike.
Yep.
Um what does this have to do with the Summer Sizzler Parade Route? You jumped ahead a couple.
Oh, did I get the wrong one? Oh, I had the wrong order. I just
Fair enough. No, that's all good. We'll we'll go to that one, and we'll come back to the other two.
Let's jog. I I can jump to the the right one. My apologies. They saw me sooner.
Uh you know, this is a pretty standard annual request, so I I don't imagine we have any concerns or questions. Go ahead, Council.
Okay, I'm a little confused. Didn't we line up by the uniplex last year? This year it's back over here.
This isn't the parade. This is for the fireworks. Yep, so. Okay. Can I have a mover in a second or to move this one forward and approve the fireworks road closure? Council Herberger, thank you. Council Minch, thank you. Oh, question? Go ahead, Council Nordic.
Sorry, I was just trying to find it on on the package here, but so it's wondering, I noticed that those orange marks are for the closure of those of Fifth Avenue.
Yeah.
And then there's one up right tight against the
Oh, yes. Uh so we just close off the the internal road within the uniplex grounds.
But I was surprised that it's not closed off on the the north end, basically the northeast corner of that black square. Because it looks like you could drive in right up to it.
Okay. Yeah, that would just be at at that point.
Because that's a roadway that goes around past the west end of the arena, so.
Yeah, yeah. So typically in the past, we've just blocked it off right at the back end of the rink. So you can't get past there, so everyone can still park in the full parking lot. Um but yeah, I mean, you could move that orange up onto the other side of that back ramp.
Yeah, that's that's kind of what I
Yeah, for sure. Yeah. So yeah, we'll definitely, we definitely make sure that
Somebody could drive right up.
Yeah, so yeah, no, we'll we'll definitely have a block so that nobody can can proceed anywhere near um where the fireworks are going off.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, any other questions or comments? Then I will, I guess we will move forward. Is everybody still happy with the recommendations as presented? Well, then call the question. All in favor? That is adopted. Okay, Mike, the next one up, it will be the twenty twenty four Summer Sizzler Parade
Parade Route. Okay, I got that one. I don't have the other one, so we're good. Uh that the route for the Summer Sizzler Parade on June, Saturday, June twenty ninth be approved as attached. Uh the cities include the Saturday morning parade within the Summer Sizzler event. Uh nearly every year uh that I've been with the city, the parade runs a route that follows many of the main arteries, including Main Street and Sixteenth Street, allowing residents to spread out throughout the community to take in the event. Uh for twenty twenty four, uh the Humboldt Chamber of Commerce will be running the parade. Uh historically, the city has organized and run it. Um but with the events being heavily geared towards and supported by the local business community, uh it's a great fit, and we're excited that the chamber organization has decided to take the lead this year. Um we're requesting the council make the res- resolution to approve the parade route as indicated below. The parade route will be returning to the route prior or sorry, used prior to twenty twenty three um beginning at the post office along Main Street and ending up at the uniplex. The parade entries will line up um at eight thirty A M using Fifth Ave between Main Street and Second Street, so towards futuristic. Um the parade will begin at nine thirty uh and the parade route uh is kind of itemized there. Um the return to the parade route previous uh was at the request of the Chamber of Commerce. We prefer that it start at the downtown and work its way so more people would line up or would come to the downtown at the start and then be able to take in some of the businesses that morning. So that was the request to go that way versus uh using the uniplex grounds.
I have a question, just looking at your map.
Yeah.
I've got A to B and C to B, so
Yeah, when I was putting it together, I'm like, ah, I should change this, but so so A is where we'll start. So the parade route will start there, and the lineup will start there. So the line, the lineup will go to B uh towards Second Avenue, going east, and then we'll go, we'll start there and go up to B, over to C and down to D. So why I didn't, why I did that the first time we put this together, I do not know, but
I kind of was wondering if that wasn't the case, but I thought it didn't think
It's a good clarification.
Off one way, half the parade's going the other way or something. So yeah, perfect. Any other questions for the director? Go ahead, Council.
Just a quick comment. This is the same route this last year.
This is the exact same route. It's just in a reverse. It's always been the same route, but
Yeah, just like a few little tweaks, and I feel like it worked really well last year, so.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's good.
Last year, it went backwards from what we had gone through.
Okay, okay.
We're confusing everyone, yeah.
My only question is how do you get back to the car that was left on? I don't know what you guys are drivers. All of a sudden, you're gonna That was my question.
Okay, I will look for a mover in a second or to adopt this request. Councilors Nordic and Courtney, thank you. All in favor? That is adopted. Next recommendation is again by the Director of Leisure Services regarding a road closure request for the Living Skies Music Festival.
All right. Um recommendation is that the requested road closure of Fifth Avenue from Peck Road uh to the H C I Teachers Parking Lot Entrance, June fifteenth from eight A M to midnight for the Living Skies Music Festival be approved. Um so this is, this is for the music festival that we're hosting on the grounds. Uh the map hopefully give made a give a clear indication as to where the concert area is going to be. Uh they'll be using Diamond Two uh as the main concert bowl. It'll be the large ball diamond that's fenced. Uh the outdoor courts, uh rinks that we're building, that'll be used, and so there'll be concession areas and washrooms around that space. So the road closure itself uh is from Peck Road. And for those of you that don't know where the H I Teachers Parking Lot is, um we've kind of it's kind of indicated there uh on the map just to the right of those two orange dots. That's where we'll be closing it off. The South Curling Lake Parking Lot will be used by the organizers for their volunteers, security, and all that. Uh they'll have access to use that parking lot. Otherwise, all parking will stay outside of that realm. We didn't want to shut off from Seventeenth Street um because we do want to utilize the student parking lot and the teachers parking lot as part of the um parking spaces for the attendance that we're expecting uh as well as the access off Seventeenth Street and the highway onto our main parking areas. Um so just the requested uh Um, so just the requested uh, closure from the teachers parking lot to Peck Road. Uh, and that's largely just to keep traffic off that fifth uh, or Fifth Avenue artery uh, as it's the back of the concert area. So just to, to prevent any issues from occurring there. So there's any questions? If I wasn't clear, I'm happy to clarify. Good. Go ahead, Councilor.
This is a little embarrassing because I just spoke to this before. I was speaking to the wrong one.
Oh.
And so this is where I see where you can drive in from the north.
Yes, yes. So that's where, yeah, we'll have to have.
You can drive right through and end up being in a, in a area along Fifth.
For sure. So yeah, we'll definitely have barricades up and I should, I should have put that on there. But it doesn't really impact council's need to give us the road closure. But yes, I should add another orange dot just at the top end of where the back of the rink is there for that purpose, for sure. Thank you.
Any other questions? Go ahead, Councilor.
Uh, yeah, I, I saw in some uh, some of the advertising that they were doing some onsite camping.
Yes.
Where is that going to be?
Uh, so we've basically allocated um, the perimeter of our main north parking lot area, the gravel parking lot. Around the perimeter of that, we've allowed for some R V parking there. Um, we haven't had a huge uptake in that yet. So we'll see how many, how many actually uptakes. So um, but yeah, we've allocated some parking spots along the perimeter of the parking lot for that. Yeah. And that's the city's doing and then we're generating the revenue from that. Yeah.
Go ahead, Councilor.
Yeah, just a couple of questions. Are you going to allow people to park along the ball diamonds there on the north?
Uh, on that north part of that asphalt millings parking lot? Yeah, yeah, it'll be parking.
And in the event of where we need people to clear off the site in a hurry is um, right to the east of the concert area there where that road is that Roger was talking about? Um, not allowing people to go down is, is it going to be able to be opened up quickly or is there going to be lots of like buses and?
Uh, no, and so in an emergency circumstance, we would be able to flood people onto Fifth Avenue if we have to get people.
Fire trucks.
Fire trucks, definitely. Yeah. Yeah, those roadways won't be blocked off at all, other than a couple barricades that we can shove off the side of. Yeah, definitely.
Go ahead, Councilor.
And my apologies if you've already said this or not, but is there anyone that's going to be controlling the large parts of the parking lot? Or is it just going to be? I just am worried that it's going to be mayhem, which.
Yeah, so we, we will have some of our staff will be scheduled for that weekend um, just to be on the grounds. Uh, the concert organizers themselves will have upwards of fifty to sixty volunteers who will be doing security in addition to actual security, a security company that's hired to come out. They'll have an additional fifty to sixty volunteers who will basically be at all the different areas. So where we have park closure or road closures, they'll have someone there where we have entrances, they'll have people there in the washrooms and they'll have some parading around the grounds too. So.
Okay, thanks.
Go ahead, Councilor.
So, um, just on that note then, I guess it depends if it's raining or not, but if it's not raining, do we have any plans to mark out a parking lot, like put some lines somewhere in, in the gravel so that we can at least maintain straight lines?
We haven't.
Because sometimes that turns into it's, you know, it's all good, but I mean, unless you're going to jump in the guy's driver's seat and park it exactly where it should be.
For sure.
The parking roads are going to be crooked and, and.
I'll be honest, we haven't discussed that specifically, but I'll put that down. That's a good idea. Yeah. We've done that for the first year during COVID when we had fireworks out there and we had to keep people spaced apart. We did that. So yeah, it's, it's super easy. We've got the marking paint and everything that we can. At least minimal. Yeah. So yeah, we can definitely make sure that we've got roll markers out there. That's not a problem at all. Thank you for that.
Hey, any other questions or comments? Seeing no further, I will look for a mover in a second or to adopt this recommendation. Council Clitch, thank you. Council Minch, thank you. All in favor? That is adopted. Onto our next recommendation this evening, which is by the Director of Public Works regarding lift station one and four and the tender results. Peter, go ahead.
Thank you. Uh, so my report is for council for approval. Uh, and the recommendation is that the contract for uh, the sewage pumping stations number four and one and four upgrades be awarded to contact general contractors limited in the value of five million, one hundred and sixty thousand, nine hundred and ninety-nine dollars plus applicable taxes. Um, as you already know, lift one and four are required to have upgrades in order to have sufficient uh, pumping capacity to make it to the wastewater, new wastewater treatment system. Uh, along with that, um, the, the new pumping system is being designed uh, at each of these lift stations to handle not only what we need to get it to the wastewater system, but what we also need for future growth and also what we need to accommodate uh, heavy rainfall events. So we've looked at all three of those uh, conditions as part of these upgrades. The tender was put out and uh, it was out there for quite a while and we even extended it by request of, of one uh, company. Uh, however, it did close on May ninth and only two bids were received. One was non-compliant. Uh, they never finished the, the tendering process. And the other one was compliant, which happens to be the contact general contractors, who is also the general contractor on the current wastewater system. So uh, after our consultants reviewed the tender, um, they checked for compliance. They checked as to why maybe there wasn't as many bidders on this as we were hoping for. Um, and uh, there wasn't a lot of responses because I know that's a, a question as to why we maybe ne- never got as many bids as we were hoping. Um, however, everything's in line. Uh, when the consultants looked at the prices and the increases and as uh, what we should be expecting for this uh, the inflationary costs that have been impacting the world, I guess, uh, i- it seems in line with what we should be expecting for this type of upgrade project. One of the, the key benefits that with having contact general contractors doing this work is that um, the critical timelines for when we have to have these lift stations upgraded for when the wastewater system comes online, they can coordinate that nicely. So uh, there's more of a reassurance of schedule so that this comes online when we need it to. So um, yeah, the, the letter from Catalon Right is attached to this uh, report. And uh, also in the financial implications, I did give an estimated overall project cost. So we are sitting around forty million, one hundred and one thousand, five hundred dollars uh, inclusive of this report and the increases that we've been seeing there. Uh, we have found some locations where we can reduce some of those costs uh, specifically in the wastewater project. So it is kind of bouncing around that forty million dollars is what we were anticipating. Uh, so yes, I'll take any questions.
Thank you, Peter. Questions for the director? Go ahead, Councilor.
Just maybe a comment instead of a question. I'm, I'm guessing maybe the tight schedule maybe limited some people. I mean, it is May already, so they, most contractors for a project of this scope probably have their two thousand and twenty-four season booked already. So I'm maybe it's just something to take, be aware of if we are going to tackle something of this magnitude again. Maybe we need to tender two years in advance or something like that, if, if at all possible, so I can't, in order to get more more bids. I don't know.
Go ahead, Councilor Minch.
Uh, yeah, um, I have just a question about uh, with contact, uh, contact with their capacity. Are they able to take, take on all three of these projects at the same time? Um, you know, are they going to be stretched? I guess that was my question.
Uh, we are pretty confident that they can take it on with the uh, amount of capacity that that company does have.
Okay, any other questions for the director? Seeing none, I will look for a mover in a second or to adopt and move forward this recommendation. Thank you, Council Jorgensen and Council Corte. All in favor? That is adopted and carried. The next recommendation is again by the Public Works Director regarding the three-year agreement for dust control.
Thank you. So the recommendation is that administration be authorized to complete a three-year contract with an option to extend an additional two years Tiger Calcium. Um, similar to what we did several years back is that we uh, put out a request for quotation and we uh, got quotes back with the objective of creating a three-year agreement so we don't have to always come back to council uh, and also to secure a bit of a a confidence in what we are going to be budgeting for in the future years. So uh, we put that out again and Tiger Calcium, who we have been using for several years, quite a few years now uh, was the lowest bid and uh, we are quite happy with the product that they have been shutting down and we are recommending to proceed with it. I'll take any questions. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Go ahead, Councilor Rick.
Yeah, just to comment and, and that I don't know what material is put on in Water Ridge and Ninth Avenue, uh, but I was bombarded with complaints, angry people about the amount that was put on and, and the amount that was tracked until like it runs off the vehicles into the, in their garage. And it leaves a mess in there and it's difficult to clean up. And, and so I directed them all to City Hall as and that's, I'm not sure if you received those calls, but I, I guess my thoughts on it were that possibly they could do it in in two passes because I think it goes on way too heavy and it's left in like down the street in puddles. No different than after a heavy rain. That's what it looked like. And, and so I think if they made two light passes, it would accomplish the same thing, but maybe not so much of a mess.
Uh, that is a fair statement and we do run into that at least for the first day or two when the product is put down. We have asked them at times to try to apply it at a lower dose, but they can only put it down so low before it's not really as controllable as we would like it to be. Um, so like in example, the alleys uh, in the downtown, we've been applying this product for so many years that we don't necessarily need as much. So we try to get it down to it's like a half a liter, a, a square meter or whatever it is. And they do have trouble dialing it down that low. Um, and depending on the location, uh, I think that area that you described also was that low, but we do have those asphalt millings there. And that doesn't bond as well on Ninth Avenue there. Or do you mean the Water Ridge Crescent itself?
Oh, there's no asphalt millions there at all. It's just gravel and it's, and it was put, part of the problem might have been because it was put on after, right after a heavy rain. And, and that was, might have been part of the problem, but it's, but it's still tracking in today. Uh, and so that's been a number of days because it was summer and I think thirty part of last week, so.
Yeah, we could, uh, we'll take note of that and see if we can improve the process.
Go ahead, Councilor Minch.
Yeah, I uh, also had a few people ask me about like on first on Eleventh Street, um, it was graded, I think, a full week or longer before they applied it. And uh, then we had heavy rain and then there was lots of potholes worked their way back into the street. And then uh, again, when they applied it, it was really heavy and it filled out those potholes in and stuff. So just wondering if maybe the, the grading could take place a little bit closer to the application. Um, I don't know if that was possible or not, be with the amount of uh, grading that needed to be done, but might be in a suggestion.
And yeah, that, that's always the challenge, uh, because we, we schedule these weeks in advance. Um, and we did have rain that didn't decide necessarily which day it wanted to fall. Uh, it was kind of all over spotty. And then with the number of roads that we do have to hit, we just have the, the one grader and they are hitting as many as they can. But then we're also kind of dealing with frost heaves at the same time. So it's kind of a mess this time of year. I, I just ask that people try to bear with us while we get through it and then it, it does get better, but uh, it is, it is tough on that respect and I, I can appreciate everybody's comments on that.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments for the director? Seeing none, I'll look for a mover in a second or to adopt this recommendation. Council Minch, thank you. Council Herberger, thank you. All in favor? That is adopted. Our next recommendation this evening is again by the Director of Public Works regarding the D L ten dust control sole source.
Thank you. So the recommendation is that administration be authorized to sole source, sole source specific chemicals, Inc. For the application of D L ten dust control to select gravel roads in the city at a cost of approximately fourteen thousand, one hundred dollars, including P S T. So this is a specific product that we've been using that we've found pretty good results with uh, when it comes to a bit more of a durable dust control product. So we put these on roads that are a little bit higher volume and we are kind of expanding that program a bit more too because we are finding some roads are just too dusty. And when we use calcium chloride, which is the other product that we just uh, discussed, the calcium doesn't last as long, but this is more expensive. So with the more expensive cost to it, we are expecting it to last longer. So we only have to do one application in the year. And sometimes we get a little bit further into spring than when using the other product. Uh, but we have had good success with this and uh, we want to continue the application uh, in the form of a sole source. I'll take any questions. Thank you.
Questions or comments for the director? Okay, seeing none, I'll look for a mover in a second or to adopt this recommendation. Councilor Nordic and Herberger, thank you. All in favor? That is adopted as well. Our last recommendation for the evening is by the Marketing and Development Manager regarding a recommendation from the Memorials Committee. Go ahead, Joe.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. In uh, the absence of the Marketing and Development Manager, I'll handle this one. The recommendation is that as recommended by the Memorials Committee, the membership composition of the Bronco Memorials Committee in the terms of reference be revised as proposed in the attached. Um, so Mr. Mayor, the uh, Memorials Committee is recommending that the two positions that were named as public art committee uh, positions be replaced with two members from the uh, at, from public at large. Um, basically the, when we as council or when you as council uh, establish the terms of reference for the committee, uh, we weren't exactly sure what form the memorial would take or the tribute would take. And it felt appropriate at that time to put members of the public arts committee on it as the vision for a tribute uh, has grown to more of a facility-based I concept than, rather than just a public art structure. Uh, the public art committee members felt that their input wasn't really necessary and they have stepped down from the committee. So um, the Memorials Committee is looking to change out the terms of reference of the committee membership uh, slightly. Um, the other aspect is, is that uh, as far as administrative liaison, we had the uh, Director of Cultural Services as the administratively, as one of the administrative liaisons where uh, the committee is recommending that that be switched out for the Marketing and Development Manager. Uh, the Marketing Development Manager has been a part, uh, has been a liaison at the meetings for quite some time. Whereas again, like the Public Art Committee, our Director of Cultural Services has largely stepped away from the committee. So basically just uh, a lot realigning the committee membership to uh, what makes the most sense and with the changes that we've seen since, since its inception.
Thank you. And makes reasonable sense to me that as things evolve, that they have evolving requirements as well. So this just seems to be more of a measure to fit into place a little bit better with what is current direction of this committee. Anybody else have any questions or comments or concerns? Seeing none, I'll look for a mover in a second or to adopt this recommendation. The Council mentioned Jorgensen, thank you. All in favor? That is adopted. Next on our agenda is inquiries. Does anyone have any inquiries of administration this evening? Seeing none, we'll move forward to Committee of the Whole. And I will look for a mover in a second or to suspend current council meeting and move into Committee of the Whole. Thank you, Council Corte. Council Herberger, all in favor? We are entering into Committee of the Whole. That concludes our recording for this evening. Thank you, everyone.